So I'm going to get up in there. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. This, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, item, this item deals with the approval of the school calendar for the next school year. A little bit of background, and I believe we've already touched on this, some tonight regarding budget for FY, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
For FY 13 and FY 14 regarding the anticipated increases in healthcare insurance. So, based on that conversation, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached 178-day calendar, 184-day teacher calendar. This would institute the six furlough days that we had previously. Currently, you know, you've approved them, there just to be four. There are two calendars here for you to consider, however, the superintendent is recommending, based on budgetary concerns and forecasts, for the approval of the 178-day calendar. A committee, a representative from each school served on the committee, led by Dr. Sheila Thomas, and Dr. Thomas is here tonight. There were district-level administrators and school-level administrators who put together these calendars, and they were asked to create two calendars to present to you, with the understanding that the superintendent would recommend one of those two calendars. Any questions?
From, Dr. Matthews is recommending the two, I mean, the 178.
Yes, sir.
Now, let me leapfrog a little bit, get an understanding. Did the team, Dr. Thomas, what's the right word, agree to that recommendation, or were they leaning more to another calendar?
Well, at the time, they didn't know that. They didn't know what the superintendent was going to recommend, because they are not privy to all the budgetary information that he is, or that the executive leadership team, along with Dr. Thomas's knowledge of the budgeting process. So, they would not be privy to the fact that the healthcare is going to increase in expense and all of that. What we told them is that, we weren't sure what you were going to approve as a, as a board, so we wanted to present you with two options. However, the superintendent, based on budgetary concerns, is recommending six furlough days. But, that group, of course, they want fewer furlough days, of course, because that means more pay for them. However, their charge was to create two calendars, one with six furlough days and one with four.
You answered my question, thank you.
So, this, this preliminary information from state health benefit plan, preliminary inform, information, this one million, this two million, this is tied to that Board of Community Health decision on 12-8, or no?
In part, yes.
Where's the other part?
The unknown, what we don't know, that might be a negative regarding the budget, because again, a lot of things have not transpired yet.
Make sure I have some clarity. The two days that we gave back, you're saying that we want to add those back, what we just given them?
Take those away again.
No. Okay.
And, and what I would say with regard to that, in terms of my recommendation, right now, the projected deficit for the end of 13-14 is two million plus. We're going to expand the theme school. That's going to add, that's going to add additional tens of thousands of dollars to the budget. We're not going to do it once, we're going to do it twice, given previous board action, we're going to expand it in the following year, moving it to the eighth grade. We also have got increased costs for the Newton College Career Academy, substantially so, for the next two school years. I am not comfortable with continuing to make that red line redder, because in 13-14, we're going to cut, I predict, and I believe I will be very correct unfortunately, several million dollars. I would rather not add another eight hundred thousand plus to that deficit. And so, if the board does not go to the 178 student calendar, we, we are indeed going to have another eight hundred thousand dollars to contend with. Now, you could say, well, let's contend with it then, you could do that. But I don't mind suggesting that I'm a very physically conservative budgeteer, if you will, from my chair, and I've been through this now 20 years, and I've seen how these things can go. But, it's the board's call, that's just my recommendation, and that's why.
Well, I just, I just feel that we, we, we have a good group of employees, teachers, administrators, custodians, all up and down the wire.
Excellent, yes.
And we just, we just voted to give them some days back, because they are dedicated, and they do a fantastic job. And I just feel that we should go ahead and wait, give them the days that we've given them, and deal with it later down the road, because they deserve it.
Well, I, I agree that they deserve it, but that's not going to put our 13-14th year in the black. And I am concerned that if there is a putback, hopefully we will go through like we did this time, previously, that we always can put it back. But I don't think, I think we're too far in advance to take, I mean, to go in the red by offering 180 days. Mr. Chairman, I just think that's going to be devastating on us, in terms of projecting for the 13-year. I, I, I just don't want to base it on they're good employees, I agree, they're all great. But I think we got to exercise some physical responsibility here, in projecting to the public. And, we're going to set out an alarm here now, and the public is going to, and our employees are going to get concerned if we start showing in the red a year before we get there. So, let's manage it conservatively until we get there, and postpone that decision.
I, I would concur with that, however, I would concur if we did not have the funds to fund it right now. But to my understanding, I will ask Dr. Carpenter, Dr. Matthews, we found something to the tune of like four million dollars that was a surplus, that we could use, and I think we discussed that, which we could use to, to do this, to my understanding. And, I think, you know, we'll address it at that year, since we already have the funds, they are too funded now, and then readdress it later.
The, the current, the current budget projection, as Ms. Bullard, our business manager, has put together, has taken into account the projected savings, for example, area of operations, from which we found substantial savings, actually referenced, Mr. Chairman. Put another way, what's in her chart now, that is projecting the two million plus at a minimum for the end of 13-14, takes into account the savings that you alluded to. So, where we are is pretty clearly on that negative several million dollar mark. And what, what putting, what keeping the furlough days to four does, is it adds another eight hundred thousand plus in red figures to the end of 13-14. You could forego that, that situation for this year, but you're going to have to contend with it the following year, and the cuts will be any deeper. You could, you could rationalize, as I did earlier tonight, and say that, we're going to wait on that topic, we're going to see how the economy turns out, and, and then we'll deal with it, even if it's eight hundred thousand dollars more, going into 13-14. I guess what I'm saying to you is, my preference is, but it's your call, clearly, my preference is to be more conservative, to have the pain be less in 13-14 than what it's, what I believe it's going to be. But it is entirely your call.
I have a question. Do we have to take board action on this next week? And the only reason why I'm asking this, like, last year, we did the school calendar, and I understand everybody want to know who is a school employee, you know, what days they're going to have off, and want to start planning trips and stuff like that, but I think the budget is concerning me, because last year, we did this at a later date. And so, we had a lot of clarity doing it at a later date, with the General Assembly having gone through with what was going to be supported from the state level and what wasn't. And so, doing it this early, with it being the second day, we don't have that clarity. And then another thing, when we did the budget meeting, I remember, and I have my notes right here, we had, we thought about that, the two days and everything else, but the items that were not included in Ms. Bullard's numbers, or the numbers that we were presented, was the Newton, the Career Academy, the kids enrollment in there. That was not included, and at that time, we were uncertain if those costs were going to be high or low. And so, I just think, this is just me speaking, I think it's too early for us to make this type of decision based on that.
Well, and we don't know what they'll do with pre-K. I mean, they say they'll add back, right?
Ten days, but we don't know if that's going to pass.
Correct. But, you know, and, the only thing I would say, and I agree, that I would like to see, are there other ways, and maybe Peggy knows, and I don't mean tonight, are there other place, I mean, it seems real easy, just to say, well, we'll do it this way and save eight eighty. Are there other, is there another eight eighty somewhere we can save without impacting In addition, and Dr. Matthews can correct me if I'm wrong, because he knows more about this than do I, but it seems to me that a lot of this is in a framework of these healthcare decisions, that are out of our control, and, and, and from a board that the governor appoints. Am I wrong?
No, I think that's right. Ultimately, the General Assembly is going to have to vote those increases.
And QBE hasn't been fully funded since, what, '01 or '02?
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
We've got real enemies, it seems like, in other, externally, you know?
From the discussions that I see, and then I have been a part of, I'm not optimistic about the healthcare cost, I'm not, I wish I could say I were, I'm not. I think they're, I think the General Assembly will end up passing those costs on to us. I hope not, I just think that's probably what they will do. That said, QBE hasn't been funded in such a long time. I don't know if Georgia's economy has sufficiently come back in order to further fuel dollars for public schools. That'd be, that would be against the current national trend that's been projected in things like Ed Week and other publications right now, even as the economy begins to perk up some. So, you know, none of us have a crystal ball. Again, I'm, I'm admittedly fairly conservative when it comes to these budget numbers, and I guess you can have pain now, or pain later, but I believe the pain's going to happen.
And, and I, I agree a lot with Mr. Johnson, but I also have a lot of the same feelings Mr. Turner has, but is there, have we looked for eight eighty somewhere else, for fiscal 13? I mean, I don't need to answer now, but is there another way to do this? I don't know. I mean, it seems like, it seems like this is quick, and, I'm not, not alleging that it's quick and easy for anybody, but it seems, to speak to Ms. Baker's, it seems quick. I, I wouldn't be ready to vote on it next week, at all.
Well, the board doesn't, I mean, ultimately, we'll have to approve a calendar, but if you want to wait to see how things begin to shake out in the General Assembly, that does not really impact the administration too much. Calls come from the public as to what the school calendar's going to be, but in a budgetary scenario that we're in, sometimes we have to be patient, even in the public at large, about the approval of school calendars, if monies are involved, and they can be.
Can I ask Dr. Carpenter a question?
Answer.
Question.
I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, do we have the funds to fund it for this year, correct?
We do, we're, we're, let me answer that question. We're projecting a six million plus fund balance at the end of, at the end of 11-12, the current fiscal year, so.
On June 30th.
Yeah. So, will the dollars be there? Yes. All it does is, if you go back, if you keep the four, is it digs the projected deficit the following year, 13-14, deeper. In other words, rather than, I'm making stuff up, rather than cut three million dollars, you cut 3.8. It's just a matter of when you want to go at it. Now, the, I would remind the board that when you approved the furlough day situation, you did say it would, was for a one-time affair, that you would review it during the course of the current budget process. So here we are, kind of at the front of it.
You go ahead, you finish.
My concern is, and I understand what you're saying, but my concern is that we just approved this, and the funds were there to fund it. Now, this being brought before us so quickly that we haven't even really, we, we, we don't have true figures, we, we are estimating what may happen, we don't know, just like Jeff and Shaquille alluded to earlier, some of the decisions haven't been made yet. So I think we're moving somewhat premature.
I think we do have to look ahead, because Dr. Matthews is looking at fiscal 13, but I agree with Ms. Baker that it's kind of early for me to thi, I mean, the calendar, yeah, but it's early for me to think about that. And what I was going to ask Dr. Carpenter, and I don't really need to answer, other than just eye contact, maybe, are we, are we, are we exploring, are we explo, and I hate to even say this, because it affects employees too, but, but these folks outside of education systems are doing this to schools, are we exploring, you know, things like, you know, contracting certain areas of the system?
Out.
Outsourcing?
I mean, they push you to these things that you have to talk about, and maybe we're not, you're looking kind of.
We may not be there yet.
You don't have to respond, I mean, I kind of get, I do.
Because I'm trying to think, where else could this money come from?
We, we explored those things during the 8.2 million cuts.
I remember.
And we thought it was in the system's best, best interest to balance some of those things, and we've done a little bit of outsourcing, but there are some areas that we're struggling by trying to maintain ourselves.
Right.
And so, we shied away from this question.
Right.
So I know what the impact could be of privatization from a financial standpoint, but there are also some environmental impacts, how it impacts the people, that we have some concerns about. And we tried to find those same savings elsewhere, if you remember, the slashing of 29 custodians to keep from privatizing the custodian program.
Right.
Trying to generate the same savings.
Is there a reason, Dr. Matthews, and whoever else may have this idea, that the attack, my, my word, is unclassified, as opposed to certified?
I, I mean, I think it's not only my opinion, but for example, the gentleman who heads the Georgia School Superintendent's Association, I'm, I'm going blank on the name, help me.
Hurt Garrett.
Hurt Garrett, who has written us, actually. I think I passed it on to you, if not, he's written recently that he thinks that there is sort of an unspoken move in the General Assembly to push public school systems towards privatization.
There you go.
As opposed to having to pick up the increased health insurance cost, for example. I can tell you right now, you asked earlier, could we find another eight hundred eighty thousand dollars or so? You know, Peggy Bullard, Dr. Carpenter, a lot of us have been thinking about this already, thinking about 13-14, and if it's several million dollars, be it two or six, and it's going to be somewhere in that range, I believe, it's, it's going to be very, very difficult, because we have cut to the bone pretty much now. It's going to be very difficult.
I have a question, I mean, something else that I have brought up with, you know, the reason why I'm, I'm not ready to move forward with this. Going back to what I was saying about the Newton County College Career Academy, when will we know a cost like for student enrollment there?
Question is, when will we know what increased costs we may incur from the Newton College Career Academy? And I think Peggy, in talking with Mr. Woodward, he's anticipating that we meet the charter projection for increased enrollment. In other words, our charter for that entity says we'll have such an enrollment for the coming year, I think it's 500-plus, I think. And that's what we're going to hit, to be congruent with that charter. Now, it's based on that notion, that Ms. Bullard has budgeted the way she has, given you those two-year projections.
But Peggy, doesn't the FTE for those students going to the Career Academy, that FTE is tied to the home school, am I correct? I mean, the operation wasn't in.
Dollars?
Yeah.
We're still going to get the same.
Right, but the operation of that building was not in the seed money. I mean, the operation, you still got to pay to operate that building.
Correct. We have some in there for that.
Okay.
Out of that two-million deficit, there's costs for the career.
Right, it's built into that projection.
Okay, I have a question about the calendar, but it has nothing to do with the 180 or 178. So, if you're finished with that decision.
When's spring break?
Well, um, okay, well, first of all, let me tell you this, by the end of the holidays recently, that Monday, I think we had a, a meeting, I had threatened to tell my children that I was going to propose a six-day school day, a school week. So, yes, six-day school week, so.
Saturday school.
Anyway, but no, and, please forgive my lack of knowledge, but why is it that we always, we've moved fours, and all the schools have moved four, towards starting in early August? Because I know way back when, we started the end of August to, and got out in June. I'm just curious for my own knowledge.
The primary reason for that has been to, to have those breaks.
But couldn't we do it by still postponing it, starting in August, and then getting out in June?
You could, but you end much later, yes, absolutely.
I mean, I'm just, I'd almost rather do that, but that's just my opinion, but.
Sure.
And then it's another house view to add.
The, I wasn't asked, but can I have some input into postponing? Is that okay for me?
Sure.
The only thing I would say is just, that you know that the, the, the General Assembly in the last two to three years hasn't finished their work until April.
Oh, yeah.
So, if you postpone that far, hopefully you wouldn't, but it certainly does impact our planning for administratively and out of this building for the next school year, in terms of new teacher orientation, getting all of those things in line, so, just, that's a consideration.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be postponing it that long, I just think that today is, or next week is way too early.
Then can we look at it come February? Even at the work session in February, that'd give us a month to.
Yeah. And you're right, because I think after we had already done the March 8th cuts, it was later that they came back and he slashed pre-K, I think.
You're exactly right.
So who knows what they'll do?
Who knows?
I'm so glad I got to present this.
You always get a phone.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It's a good experience.
Excellent job, Dr. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Thank Dr. Thomas for chairing this committee, that's not.
Okay, item, F, I, Dr. Thomas?
Good evening, Dr. Matthews, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The superintendent recommends that the 2011-12 Title I budget is approved. As a requirement of receiving federal funds from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 for the Title I programs, the LEA must submit for approval an annual budget through the consolidated application process. The Title I educational program specialist at the Georgia Department of Education reviews each application and each budget to ensure that expenditures are appropriate for the program areas before approving the LEA's budget. Once the budget is approved, the Title I program specialist tracks how well the LEA uses their requested funds for expenditures to ensure that the LEAs are likely to meet the expenditure requirements of the Title I program. The Elementary and Secondary Educational Act requires that the local LEA sets aside a certain amount of funds to support the following areas: indirect costs, carryover funds, school allocations, SES program, public school choice, parental involvement, the homeless program, and professional learning. The federal-funded Title I budget is to support educational services to all Title I schools that are over and beyond what the system is providing to all students. Currently, we have 19 Title I schools, 11 are elementary Title I schools, five middle schools, two high schools, and we also have challenge charter that is a Title I school. You have been provided a copy of the Title I budget that has been approved by the Georgia Department of Education already. Do you have any questions of me?
Any questions?
Yes, I have one. If I'm looking at this correctly, Newton High School has a parent involvement coordinator?
Yes.
Unlike Eastside or Alcove, or vice versa. Any rationale behind it and share?
Yes. Each school has the discretion to set their own school improvement plan, as well as their Title I budget, and however they use those federal funds is based on the need of their school, each individual school. So, based on the need at Newton High School, they have determined that they needed a parent involvement coordinator there versus what Alcove's needs are. So that's the reason they have elected to use their funds to support hiring a parent involvement coordinator, as well as an instructional coach.
And, and I believe there are others. Dr. Matthews, any significant why a school is allowed to, I understand what you're saying, but shouldn't we be consistent there in the?
Well, not all, not all needs are the same, just as not all schools are the same. But to be, to best answer your question, Mr. Johnson, federal statute in this matter envisions the individual school having that discretion. It's actually what it envisions. Otherwise, I could be dictating from my office, I don't think that's what the feds envision. Let's put it another way.
I'm not asking, you know, to micromanage or this process or anything, but I, I don't see, and I could be corrected, that the uniqueness of Newton High, as opposed to Eastside, whatever, we got the same issues there. I don't see it being a variety of issues that, and I know one silver bullet won't shoot it all.
And I'm not familiar with what Eastside has, because they're not a Title I school this year, so they would not have the funding to support.
Weren't they rolling into the first phase of that, though, in fiscal?
For the next year, for the 12-13 school year.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
Kind of piggybacking off what Mr. Johnson is saying.
Targeted assistance.
Targeted assistance, yes.
Who is doing the assessment of what the schools' needs are? Is it the principal, or is it the, the office here, who assess what their needs are?
What I do is, I work with, and there's another private consultant, Ms. Rebecca Reeves, we both go out to Newton High, meet with the principal, the administrators there, and the leadership team. So we look at all the data points that they have collected in the previous year to determine what are the needs at Newton High School. And then the needs are then prioritized, based on the funding, to see what can be supported with the amount of funds that they're receiving in Title I.
And I guess my other question kind of ties in with that. You all receive all the data that the different schools submit. Based on that data that you receive, can you derive what that school may be in the needs of, and address those concerns from that point?
Yes, in conjunction with what the school is saying, because, you know, the, they are right, they're working, they can better assess their needs.
You understand, right, I'm just, I'm just, I just, I'm like Mr. Johnson, I just think that we, we need to make sure that we are addressing the true needs of the school, instead of somebody just wanting to do a certain thing a certain way.
Right.
That's, that's my concern.
And what, what we also do is, they're not, they don't have the full autonomy to just go out here and say, oh, I want a new yard man, or what have you, a lawn service, they cannot do that. They have to make sure their needs are academically sound, that it's going to support instruction and is going to improve student achievement. So along with working with myself, and then we're also in conjunction with the executive directors, to make sure that what they're doing in the form of personnel, resources, material supplies, things of that nature, that it is appropriate, based on their school improvement plan and based on their needs. So when they, when we meet to discuss what the needs are, and then a plan is written, it is sent to me, and then I review it, they also have to send in purchase requests, and, as well as staff requests, and I work, again, with the executive directors to make sure that this is in line with what the school needs to do, as well as the vision of the district, so that we can make sure that everything is on one accord.
And Dr. Thomas, you, you worked a lot with, with federal officials, or state officials who deal with federal programs. I think federal regulation envisions that the school arrive at a plan from a data-driven standpoint.
That's correct.
In other words, they just can't make stuff up.
That's correct. And within their plan is 18 components, and the very first component is, they have to write a very lengthy and very thorough synopsis of what their data says, and how that data impacts student achievement moving forward.
Okay.
Well, you know, in a way, just sitting on the outside, if, if that is to increase parent, I guess, support and involvement in, in the community, we see how at the theme school that impacts test scores. It would make sense to me, while, while I could say, I could sit here and say, well, you need a math coach, that may not be right. It might be that the folks there have greater insight, being closer to the work, this is just my opinion. So, I could be wrong, and that might really overall boost achievement even more than what I would think.
And I believe that we have to put some faith and trust into the employees there, that they know what they, what the needs are, because they're there working, and they have assessed the needs each and every day. And as long as this is in line with what the federal guidelines state, as well as what the district goes and vision, vision, vision is, then we tend to support what the schools would like to have, as long as they have done a. then we tend to support, um, what the schools would like to have, as long as they have done a thorough investigation of what their needs are.
Yeah, it seems like we've got to get checks and ballots system in place.
They know I'm coming.
Any other question? Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas, thank you. Item G, uh, Dr. West?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreement between the Newton County School System and Laurel Heights Treatment Center, and this is to provide intensive day treatment services for, um, our students as needed in Newton County. Background is the district is responsible for obtaining, providing, or arranging for the provision of special education services as determined by the student's IEP, as well as the funding for such services for students residing in the district. Currently, the district has a need for specialized intensive treatment for students with severe and complex psychiatric and behavioral difficulties that cannot be addressed in the current public school environment. We have negotiated a daily tuition fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, which would include five point five hours of instruction, including physical education, recreational therapy, speech, and OT services, community integration activities, family training, and transition back to the home school. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Item H, or Dr. Shattuck?
Dr. Matthews, Mr. Chairman, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Item H refers to the superintendent recommends that a bid of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars from HP for the renewal of a service support agreement be approved. Annually, the technology department renews the service support agreement for the SAN, which is our data storage device, in order to provide for software updates and provide for product warranty in the event of a failure. The data storage device contains all the data for the entire school system. These funds will come out of the technology department's two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budgeted funds.
Any questions?
They'll come out of this year, fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't have a question on this particular item, but since you got the standard, Dr. Shattuck, uh, over the holidays, we had a, an interu- service interruption. And some of our UPS systems failed on the power supply side. And we had discussed this prior to this, and I'm under the opinion, based on my years of experience, that we have a, a, a heat attack on the equipment, and it's not going to get any better.
Right.
I don't understand, and you can help me or Dr. Matthews, why we are procrastinating in purchasing other than the potential transfer of the new, old Newton High to, uh, the, um.
Career Academy.
Career Academy. Why we procrastinate? We, we, we are just playing with disaster in terms of providing service. If the system go down seriously, we all gonna look at each other and just say, what happened? That's about the only thing we can say. So why, tell us, and I'm including Dr. Matthews, what we need to do to get the equipment that we need so we can have a reliable, dependable communication system?
I'm gonna let you go first.
And that is about what I was gonna say, so thank you.
Mr. Johnson, this event that you're referring to happened, uh, this past Saturday, not over the holidays.
That's what I was hearing about. Saturday, this past Saturday?
This past Saturday.
What happened?
Well, well, my point is, it happened regardless of the date.
Was it kind of like the May?
You're absolutely right, and the, the issue at hand is what do you replace? We could replace all the equipment, and it'd be a very expensive proposition. And so currently, we have, uh, some spare equipment that we can put in place. And we're in the process of doing a needs assessment on all the equipment that we'll need. One of the things that I wanted to wait on was the decision you made in December about the Network Operations Center, because that decision im- would impacted what type of equipment we would be getting. And so I had to know where this equipment would be eventually located before we could make an intelligent decision about exactly what style of servers, for example, we would be buying. And so we're in the process now of doing an entire needs assessment in the network oper- in the network room right now. And by the end of this month, we should have a needs assessment completed. Some of the equipment in that room, I've already turned, made a claim with the insurance company to get them replaced. So we're, we're going through this process, Mr. Johnson. It's not that we're, we're burying our head in the sand and ignoring the issues. We are working through the various processes we have to to come up with an intelligent decision. That, that our proposal will be taken to the executive leadership team, and after consultation with them, the board will be apprised of the, their decision.
And Dr. Shattuck approached me earlier with just that suggestion, and I said I thought that was a prudent course of action, that he'd do the study, bring it to ELT before we bring it to you.
But I want you to know, we are working.
Well, let, let's put some, you don't sense, or Dr. Matthews, any sense of urgency?
I feel it when.
Mr. Johnson, I have sensed urgency for at least three or four years over this.
Well, that's too long for any emergency.
And it wasn't until May that finally, that, um, everyone understood the serious concerns that I've been expressing for a very long time.
But this is eight months later, so it's gonna continue if we don't do something.
It will continue. There's no doubt in my mind that it will continue. So we are fixing it.
Okay.
But I had to wait until the decision I made of where the equipment was gonna be located.
Were you happy with that decision in December? Did that help to move it along?
Oh, absolutely. I jumped up and down and, and yelled for joy after I left this room.
Let me, let me ask you this. Kind of made things a little cloudy for me. Everybody else made me clear on it. The proposal that was brought to us to look at, did it include everything that we need in order to make the move?
That's right.
And the reason I'm asking that is because you made the statement that you need to figure out what needs to be bought and what type equipment needs to be bought.
And that's the process we're going through right now.
So, so the figure that you gave us with all the add-ons, that's, that's not?
The figure that I gave you, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars included money for equipment. Now, exactly which equipment is two DB to determine. But to let you know, I have just received notification, and, and Dr. Matthews doesn't even know this yet. I just received notification this month that an application I made and for E-Rate back in February of two thousand and ten has been approved, and that application included the equipment for the Network Operations Center. So a lot of the equipment will be, be putting in there, will be bought at a substantial discount. Included in that application was also a plethora of servers, so we will be able to buy those at, at a very steep discount.
How much money was that application? Do you, 'cause me?
For the career ca- for the Network Operations Center.
Well, no, the one that you just found out that was approved.
That's what I'm saying, and, and well, the servers, I, I can't remember how many servers I requested, but the servers were, depending on the school this is attached to, the servers were discounted anywhere from, um, eighty to sixty percent. The other equipment that goes in the Network Operations Center discounted at seventy-eight percent.
Okay. When we had a meeting, I think it was in October, there was something about this fiscal year that was an advantage to using the E-Rate money. I don't remember what it was, but it was.
Well, the, the money was, was, has been the, the money, I found out in September that the money for the eighty percent level facilities had been approved. The Career Academy was at seventy-eight percent. I hadn't received notification on that, but I just did, uh, a week ago.
And how much was that?
Well, I asked for a lot more than I would need, but I asked for eight hundred thousand dollars, and they approved six hundred thousand dollars. But we're not gonna need that much. But at the time that I applied for it, I didn't know what I would need. So I applied for more than I thought I would need.
Dr. Shattuck, simplify it for me, you know. You gotta talk to me like I don't have any experience in communication at all. No background knowledge at all.
Yes, we have no background knowledge.
Now, if you got this money.
We need a strategy.
I know Dr. Carpenter is beating the contractors on their head over at Career Academy.
Beat, beat harder.
But you ought to be talking to him so he can clean that room out, and you can start installing the network equipment. We don't have to wait until, uh, this thing fall. We should be over there installing. We can half-tap through fiber. Some of the equipments here, we got it. Half-tap it with fiber over there and feed it back. Let it go and start operating.
Mr. Johnson, when we talked to the contractor, uh, a week, excuse me, a week ago.
Dr. Carpenter got the, get the contractor to let us in that room and start working.
Well, right when we talked to him last week, trying to determine when we could start this work, because this has been a discussion we've had multiple times. And we've had to postpone work multiple times. At that point, the moisture level in the building was at nine percent, and we can't put equipment and operate it in a nine percent environment, so.
So had the air conditioner not working?
Pardon?
The air conditioner's not working?
It wasn't as of last week. Now, I understood it was gonna start working either Monday or Tuesday this week.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Um, they can't start working in that building now because it's a separate permit thing that they have to go through with the county. They just can't go in because that wasn't the original plan that was permitted for the building, so we got to finish this building before they can receive the five permi to start doing, like, network operating.
See, that delays, delayed Dr. Shattuck.
You have to have a different permit to install a communication room.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, let me, let me try to clarify.
I'm just asking a question, huh?
I know, let me try to clarify for you, so.
I told you, I was a layman, I knew how to talk.
We're talking, we're really talking about two different issues. We are very concerned about getting the equipment in for the building, for the building to operate, for the building to function, for students, instruction to be delivered to students, and teachers to be able to access the internet, etc. That's one issue. We have, uh, three, I think it's three closets, is that correct, Mike? Three or four closets that hold this equipment and that makes the building operate. That has nothing to do with the other facilities throughout the county. That room in the basement has to be bid out. Remember, you asked about how much the total cost was gonna be, was gonna go through a bid process? That has to be bid out, and we can't do that until the building is completed and we've occupied it. So we all, we've discussed these things. We're very aware of the timeline and the, the danger that it is, this, the school system is facing by not doing things faster to get the equipment replaced. And we're very, all very aware of that, and, but we're doing what we can in a very logical process to follow the guidelines, to make sure we do it as expeditionally as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Shattuck. Question. We got, uh, some E-Rate money, right?
Yes.
How much was that?
For, we, there's a lot of different things we apply for.
When you mentioned to us that you had found some money that was E-Rate money that was refundable to us?
It was twenty-ten.
Yeah, how much was that?
There, there, according to my calculations, and that's based upon everything that we had, plus everything I thought we would be getting, and we did get everything I thought we would, we will be, we, we will be refunded one point one eight million dollars.
Okay.
Of money that we have spent or we had planned on spending, which includes the, the construction of the new Newton High School. The, not just construction, but the technology for the new Newton High School.
Now, with that E-Rate money, can it be used for anything that goes back into the general fund? Am I correct?
Anything.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that you applied for a grant that we're gonna get six hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
So that would take?
That, that, that was part of it, but it wasn't figured into the calculations of the reimbursement. That was a separate item.
I, I understand that, but my point is, what you submitted to us to redo the technology room was in total of, what, five hundred and eighty?
Five hundred and ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand.
Right.
So my question is, since you applied for the grant, we can use that money now to, E-Rate money for something else, correct?
That money is different from the other money. That money was dependent upon actually spending it. We had, I hadn't calculated the expenditure of that yet, and so we will only get reimbursement on the money we actually expend.
Okay, right.
But it has to be the equipment. It can't be air conditioners, it can't be universal power supplies, it can't be construction or anything like that.
This is the grant?
This is a, a grant, a federal.
Okay, but the E-Rate money goes back into the general fund?
It, this is part of E-Rate, but it's a separate, uh, separate discussion. It's all the same thing, but I, I didn't bring it into the mix when I was talking.
My question is, how much of the E-Rate money can go back into general funds?
All of it.
Okay, so and that's what Jeff was saying a little bit ago about cutting, finding somewhere else to cut. The money's put back that we're not gonna spend for the technology.
According to what you've already approved, there would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over.
Right, given prior board action.
Right.
I, I understand, but I'm, I'm speaking of the grant that you're saying we're gonna receive some funds for. So that, that five hundred and ninety thousand dollars is some money that we won't have to spend because we're getting a grant to do this improvement. Am I correct?
That five hundred and ninety thousand dollars included some equipment, but it didn't include replacing all the servers. That grant was made in January two thousand and ten, so we did not, that money, when it, that, that six hundred thousand dollars is a reimbursement based upon money that we will expend from this point forward. So there won't be any money that goes in the general fund, in essence, because we haven't budgeted for that money yet.
So in other words, there's not gonna be an extra six hundred thousand dollars?
No.
To go pay for, to hang out, to go back and pay for furlough days or whatever.
No, but it would pay for servers that would have to come out of the general fund if we decided by servers.
That's how it was.
Yeah, I, I understand. There's not gonna be six hundred thousand right there to, to put towards furlough days, is it?
Well, we unanimously approved that five ninety, so that would require that we went back through that, wouldn't it? I mean.
But you say he's gonna, Dr. Shattuck, you, you're using the six hundred thousand dollars.
Right, that money will be used, and maybe not all of it, but as much of as possible will be used.
Asking us for six hundred thousand.
Right.
If, if, to answer your question, Mr. Turner, if after all the equipment is purchased, and if we have money left over, I will turn it in to the general fund.
I'm still, I'm.
Unless we have another meltdown during graduation.
I, I'll talk to you about it later.
We get it.
It gets very complicated. Thank you, Doc. Okay, item, uh, I, uh, Dr. Matthews?
Um, the last time, uh, the board met, uh, I shared with you some background information regarding the legislative positions of GSBA, GSSA, and some surrounding school systems, and suggested that the board create a subcommittee or work as the board as a whole to reform your legislative position. So if you haven't done that, that's, that's the background to date.
Have everybody had an opportunity to look at, at these?
So, uh, n- next meeting, uh, if you all, if the board's, uh, desire, can we meet about five thirty to put our request down?
That's fine.
Okay.
By Friday, next Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
One suggestion for you to consider heading into that, just for your consideration, is sometimes less is more, as opposed to, you know, fifteen positions, sometimes four or five good ones will serve you better.
Yes. Okay, great. Okay, item, uh, J? Miss Vina?
I really don't know if I wanna cut out here. Especially since I have the joy of presenting the other calendar. Um, do you have this on your screens? Okay. By board policy, BCA, at your annual meeting, which is next, uh, Tuesday, the school board is required to establish the time, the date, and place of its work sessions and regular monthly meetings for this calendar year. The proposed schedule that you are reviewing is based on the schedule from previous years. By policy, the second and third Tuesday of each month are set as our meeting days, and traditionally, excuse me, the board holds combined monthly work. traditionally, excuse me, the board holds combined monthly work sessions, monthly meetings in July and December. Our current calendar, as well as the proposed calendars that you reviewed earlier, were utilized to select these dates. We also looked at the schedule for the Georgia School Superintendents Association and the Georgia School Boards Association conferences, and our current breaks that are already scheduled for this year. Now, after reviewing those calendars, there are three exceptions to our normal routine, and if you'll look on the proposed dates, you'll see that they're marked in red. In February, proposed meeting dates fall on the second and the fourth Tuesday because of our winter break that's scheduled February twentieth through the twenty-fourth. And in June, we had the first and the third Tuesdays were proposed due to the GSBA conference that's scheduled. Why are you grinning, Dr.?
I was thinking of Ms. Allen.
Yes, she can come up here and tell her delight in trying to schedule your, if you can even get into the conference. I don't know after her dealings with them, they may not want to go.
It can't be worse than mine.
Might be best advised to stay home. One of the things we can actually change on this one, when I did these meeting dates, at the time, the only thing that GSBA had on their schedule was that the pre-conference training would be held on the thirteenth and the fourteenth, but they didn't say what it was, and when they opened all of this up here in the last couple of days, they've indicated that the thirteenth is actually, let's see here, or the thirteenth is the Communications and Policy Workshop, and, or scheduled for the fourteenth, I'm sorry, and the new board member training is scheduled for the thirteenth. So, unless somebody here tonight has some big news to announce, we won't have any new school board members come June, so we could actually change this June schedule back to our original, because none of you would need to leave early enough to go to the new board member training. We could actually switch that back to the second and the third Tuesday, meaning you would meet on June twelfth. So, that's, if you want to do that, you can. And the third change was that in November, we had the second and the fourth Tuesday selected because of the Thanksgiving break that's proposed. Then, after hearing your conversation tonight, I went back and looked at the one eighty-day calendar. This schedule would work with it as well, so, whichever one. So, basically, what you need to do is review your schedules. For the two combined monthly meetings, I picked the third Tuesdays, but you can always change that after looking at your schedules, but once you set your calendar, you can only change it once in twelve months.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
Executive session of each board meeting begins at five thirty.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can change that. Yeah, it used to be that way.
We didn't have the heart to tell you.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
So, June, we can change back?
You can actually change that back, because at the time, they just said it was pre-training.
You can go on vacation at the conference if you have to.
And I can go ahead and make that change, and we can repost this, if that's what you want to do.
And then, but November, we can't change back?
Not unless you want to meet during Thanksgiving break.
Oh, no, okay.
You can meet by yourself if you like.
That's all right.
It's fine with me to change that back to June the twelfth.
Want me to change June twelfth back?
What does everybody else think?
That's fine. We did it last year, or this year, and I had the new board training, and we just got up early and went the next day. Because it doesn't start even if we did have it until twelve.
Okay. And then, how about the two combined work session monthly meetings? Are you okay with those on the third? I put them on our traditional monthly meeting date.
I would ask that we keep the eighteenth in December at that date.
Okay.
They're fine.
And then, the July is okay? Or do you wanna look at July?
It's fine.
Okay.
Just June.
Okay, so just go ahead and change June back to the traditional schedule?
Is that a agreement?
No, we don't do that till the twentieth or twenty-first on either one of those calendars.
Is that okay with everybody?
It would be the twelfth and nineteenth, the second and the third Tuesday. The fifth is the first.
You mean for June?
Oh, I would say I might change the nineteenth as well.
No, 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 no.
We're changing both dates.
No.
Oh, I see, well...
Instead of the second and the third, we had the first and the third, so you would change, you would get rid of the fifth and make it June twelfth, so the meeting dates would be June twelfth and June nineteenth.
Yeah, I would prefer...
Can we do fifth and twelfth if we agree? Would y'all disagree with that?
I prefer fifth and twelfth.
That's what I thought we were doing. I think that's what you thought.
I always go on vacation, June's hard.
Does that problem?
No, because it's still changed because of the conference.
Fifth work session, twelfth monthly.
Yeah, that works better for me.
It won't work for me.
It won't work for you?
The nineteenth is our traditional date.
Well, you guys can do the nineteenth, I just won't be here.
Okay, so you wanna do the fifth and the twelfth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, one of us gonna be out.
Go ahead and do it, I'll whoop some of that.
Fifth and the twelfth?
Yeah.
Does this count as our one time in twelve months?
No. This is once you vote on this, approve it, and it gets published, then in the next twelve months, you can change your calendar once. So, fifth and the twelfth. Fifth and the twelfth.
Okay, thank you. Item J, I'm sorry, item K, at our next meeting, just advise the board that we'll be selecting a new chair and vice chair, so you all be thinking about it and be prepared to make your nominations at our next meeting. Okay? Al, Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we'll ask the board to approve all personnel items as outlined on behalf of the superintendent during executive session.
They have a motion to approve items under Al, please. Motion by Ms. Coggins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Meadows, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Mr. Johnson, is any matters of interest or concern?
No, I expressed them with the network room, that's my pet peeve, I just, we just gotta move on it. And we can move faster, and I hope we can. But see, what happened? Dr. Carpenter had been finished with the building.
It's feeling kinda cold up here. It's cold.
Ms. Coggins?
No, I'm just glad we, most of us made it back from the holidays, safe and sound. I know we've had some tragic losses, and we need to keep those people in our purse.
Thank you. Mr. Meadows?
No, thank you.
You don't have anything? Okay, Ms. Baker?
Would you believe it, I do not have anything. Nothing tonight.
And I don't have anything, I just hope we continue to have a good year, starting out the fresh, new year two thousand and twelve. And Dr. Matthews, you have anything?
No, thank you, sir.
Having that, could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Absolute.
Motion by Mr. Meadows, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.